Cape Charles Town Council, ready to meet for December 15th to come from the point of order. May I have a roll call, please?
Natali here.
Sullivan, President.
Bannon here.
Rattler here.
Buckle chair.
We have a draw. Let's stand for a moment of silence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation of our own, individual liberty and justice for all.
It's not on the agenda, but today happens to be Chris Bannon's 80th birthday.
(applause).
(inaudible) financial contributions.
What do you guys want to go from these?
Still.
All right, first item of business is the recognition visitors presentation. Eastern Shore Out of the Darkness Walk presented us with a certificate of participation. I'll read the letter, and then eventually, I guess we'll have this certificate for people to be able to look at at some point. So, "Dear Town of Cape Charles, on behalf of the Eastern Shore Community Services Board and the Eastern Shore Suicide Prevention Task Force, I would like to personally thank you for volunteering your time and efforts at the Eastern Shore Out of the Darkness Walk. This event could not have been a success without your help and the help of the many others who volunteered their time. Due to the many efforts of local sponsors, human services organizations, task force members, walkers and volunteers like yourselves, we were able to raise almost $10,000 for this event. And the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, in total, we had 154 walkers participate in the event. Once again, thank you for your contribution. It is signed, Kelly Hill Dewar, who's the Director of Program Development, Planning, and Prevention Services, and there's a very nice certificate been awarded to the town for this." So, I think these things are important for us to become a part of, and it's nice that we all participate. So, next order of business is public comment.
John Burris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Member of the Council. I'm John Burris, and I'm here as your IDA representative, if you haven't seen me in a while, and also as a committee member tonight for Regent Film School. I'm a Regent Law School alumni, I believe, but some remember that I've heard that they're asking to be here, because Emily Maugh cannot be here tonight. She's the VP of Regent. She's out of town. Mitch Land, who's the Director, Head of Regent Film School, is not here. What I want to talk about tonight are movies, and I say that plural. The Regent sponsor of an event at the Palace, some of you were there, for the film Inlawful Yours, and after that, really just to thank the Town for cooperation, they're receiving their filming, they need to be here. Corbin Burnson, who's one of the actors in that film, wants to go forward more films, and is interested in making another film here in Cape Charles Eastern Shore in early 2017. As some of you know, they're seeking investors to support that film, let's not bother here about it, just mentioning it, because some of you are not aware of it, perhaps. What we'd like to do is discuss the relationship with the town about future films, not necessarily just the ones they're contemplating in early 2017, but longer-term arrangements. So perhaps there's a prospect of a workshop or some of the meeting of the council of future date, during, for people to film office from the town, maybe from the IDA, for people to talk about how this might work, and what benefits might be. At some point in time, maybe ask for financial support, I'm not sure about that, and I'm not going to ask for that tonight. Speaking for myself, as a member of the IDA and go part of the chair, we think the idea of filming on the Eastern Shore has the potential to have short-term and long-term economic benefit, and we really frankly don't see a downside. So, I wasn't committed by anything, and we think something worth embracing, at least for consideration purposes, both would think. With me tonight, I have gifts at 15:00 tonight, I'm not birthday gifts, but I have a copy of the DVD of the film Inlawful Yours, and there's one for each member of council, and Town Manager, and the mayor. I have seven birth shorts, which means there's one short, so somebody will need to read that, I assume, anyway, probably. Maybe it didn't get to cover, but seven birth shorts, please leave it on. Some of you may remember that the film made here in 1947, called The Clam Digger's Daughter, also known as The Story of Mr. Cox. So seventy years later, there's a chance to make another film in Cape Charles, this one not counted, I'll put the one that's coming up next. Also, you may be aware, certainly aware, that HTTV has done a film with your act, I think they've done two, I'm not sure if that one's been released yet. Our apartment, which they labeled The Penthouse, was on that one. If you're not aware of that, a lot of people told me that that became a great emotional clinical case for people ahead of MBS, people ahead of real estate, and that's something Cape Charles has done best on that. All I'm saying is that, you know, take The Clam Digger's Daughter, if you haven't seen that, I recommend it to you. It's a really spooky bad film, but it was seventy years ago, so it's black and white, fun to watch. This is a nice film, if you didn't see it, it's a good film, it's a good family film. Regent would not win it, it would be different, I don't think.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. So all I can say is I think the prospects for film work here, if it becomes a backlog, whatever it may be, that it's always better than better, for things like that in Cape Charles. Whether it becomes an economic boon or not, I'm not about to say that, but I don't think it's going to be a backwards step to embrace it, and I hope it's a good one for mine, and moving DVD, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you think they could do a real three of Clam Digger's Daughter?
(laughing) It's possible. I talked about that just today, about the scene, if you haven't seen it, you've seen where they lock up the evil banker, maybe a lawyer in there, too, in a shed, and it's got like two nails that wouldn't go on a chicken, and I said, "That'll hold him," it's really bad, but it's.
It'd be driving Mr. Davis.
(laughing) Driving Mr. Davis. Do you have a question?
Well, I don't know, down, ten years down the road, maybe we'll have a Cape Charles Film Festival, choose all films of the day here in Cape Charles.
(inaudible).
I'm not a Cape Charles film publicist.
The Regent's really close, so I mean, the idea of them using this as a place to film, and we have a kind of, if you call it community, a little town, that makes sense to them, so it's a convenience factor, too, to them, but they can pick other places as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment, Cliffy?
That was it.
All right, thank you. Time for the public comment is closed. I need a motion to approve the agenda format.
Who's second?
All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Tentative format is approved. I need a motion to approve the amendments in the previous meetings that we have had. So, is there a second? All in favor of approving the amendments as submitted? Any opposed? Motion approved.
(inaudible) cash, total annual cash on hand at the end of November was $2,145,670, which will increase at $144,801 over October. Total restricted reserve cash was $1,559,751. Public cash on all accounts was $3,504,808. There be a reminder that the Town runnets for Dart Lady and Dogs being the owners controlling the next utility of the December's bill. Page two. General fund shows year-to-date revenue of $994,600 and year-to-date expenses of $1,254 million for net balance of negative $259,000. Public Utilities Fund has year-to-date revenue of $679,700. Year-to-date expenses are $536,600 for net balance of $143,100. Harbor Fund, year-to-date revenue of $260,800 and year-to-date expenses of $306,800 for net balance of negative $46,000. Sanitation Fund is year-to-date revenue of $75,700, year-to-date expenses of $59,100 for net balance of $16,600. Any questions? Capital Projects, $33,471 was dispersed for capital expenditures in November. Of that amount, $31,764 was for the tram project, $1,707 was for the river parking area. Tax collection statistics you have before you as of November 30th, but as of this morning, staff has collected and posted $1,065,552 in real property taxes and $136,507 in personal property taxes and licenses in the new county system. Penalties were not applied until December 13th, and that's because the phones were down, and that's why people haven't called in and going to pay their taxes with a hump over the phone, and also the bills are out a week later, so we gave them weeks' grace. Meals tax revenue, on page five. Meals tax revenue was 7.7% higher year-to-date than last year. Transient occupancy tax revenue is 13.3% higher than year-to-date from 2015, and low wholesale taxes 5% higher than this time last year. Any questions? Then I'll put the debt on January.
Okay.
There wasn't time to keep that down again. Do you have any answers?
I assume there will be.
I never got it. Well, that's why I want to have a big one, I think. Thank you. As far as when I left.
We can review these.
Do I assume she will reward?
Yeah, I think we can review these.
Well, where did we get them all?
Can you post those online, too? They weren't in the packet.
No, they weren't in the packet, they didn't make the packet.
Yeah, so, all right, so we'll, Council will get copies of all that, hopefully tomorrow. Okay, thank you. So, I think.
Is the new system flying smoothly?
Nerds are a little afraid, but it's going well. Transition.
Any other questions? Good, thank you. First, any question?
The only thing I have is, did everybody see the tram cap, this tax, all that stuff? Sales taxes are a little higher, but Harvey's down, 40 grand. All I'm saying is, it's one of those, there's a big shift.
Fair enough.
That's it.
Fair enough. We'll need to have, especially if that is something. Next order of business, planning commission awards.
Mr. Mayor and the Council, and of course, Merry Christmas, one and all.
Christmases.
I don't have anything to add to this month's report, I just want to remind everyone that the planning commission's agenda tentatively for the month before is posted and on the planning commission's monthly report, so if you're a little planning commission exempt or passed, if you find my monthly status there before, always under four C, and that will give you an idea of what the planning commission has coming up in the next month. In January, scheduled to at this point, kind of take a look at the draft CIP, and also to take a look at the draft design standards for the historic district, historic town entries, all of it. So those were two projects that I know the town was interested in seeing the planning commission.
Any questions?
So, all will see January.
Any questions? Thank you very much, and I realize we did not vote to approve the treasurer's report.
Make the question.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Treasurer's report is approved. Code enforcement.
The only thing I had to add was a comment from last month about the former Stip Park being used as a brush dump. I wrote back there, and it looks like most of what was back there was brush, big piles of brush, I'm not sure if that came from when they acquired the Gallagher property and cleaned that up a little bit. Definitely a good control burn, wouldn't take care of. There was one small pile of, looked like center blocks and stuff, I'm assuming that's probably just clean up from when they did the foundation for the Harvey building, so I'm hoping they'll take care of that. But I didn't see a major issue, but I still will bring it to their attention, at least get it cleaned up, if that's the case.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you very much. Town Harbor.
Charlie's unable to attend tonight due to family issues, so I can tell you through the report, if anyone has any questions, which you received last Friday, of these concerns, and their concerns, they'll be announced as well. Debbie's going to try to go over there and delve farther into some of those numbers to see if there's a trend, a more specific trend, so we got probably a little premature for me to talk about that at this point, but it's something we're looking into.
I guess we're working on the second, third quarter, trying to have numbers on us, probably have reflected here in the first quarter.
I said, "If you all saw the salary,"
Yeah, I saw that. I did see that.
I'd like to suggest the following, we are going to form a Town Harbor focus committee.
Later.
Well, fairly soon, I hope, I hope at this meeting.
Business.
Yeah, so we'll put a town council member on that, and one of the first things I would expect they would do would be to go through the finances with Debbie and with Charlie, and figure out why things are going the way they are, and what is changed, and then how do we fix that? So, I think the other thing that that board will be doing would be, I would hope they would be looking at the possibilities of bringing in a management company, whether, we don't know that we're going to do that, but it's something that we should be considering to look at. So there's a whole bunch of, bundle of things here that I'd like to see that, those folks come back and discuss. Everyone in favor of that? All right, so, thank you. Let's see, the library.
I don't have anything to add, but I'd like to respond to Town Council's request for the number of library cardholders, Eastern Shore Public Library, that calls their library their home library. There are currently, total in the Eastern Shore Public Library system, there's 16,618 library cardholders. There are 2,048 library cardholders that give their home address as a Cape Charles Memorial Library. So that means that we are the home library for 12.3% of all Eastern Shore public library patrons. And I just want people to note that that's from Eastville down, that we have many users in Machu Picchu, and even further up, so, and sometimes people aren't at the right library they move, so just keep that in mind.
What was the total number of libraries?
16,618.
Sixteen?
That's in both counties, that's all on the whole Eastern Shore.
Oh, both counties?
Both counties, the total in both counties.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's a regional library system, and the total that we have that lists on their library card application that Cape Charles is their, and it could be Cape Charles, it could be Nassauautics, it could be Akamaka, Shinkit, they list Cape Charles as their home library. We have 2,048 library packages, so that's 12.3%.
Except for it doesn't go down to the fridge, so it's.
Yes.
So they normally have, I think when I applied for, I had to give my address.
It's on the same zip code.
I had to give my mailing address, which included a zip code. Can they not do a search by zip code for Eastville and Cape Charles?
Well, you got.
It's the whole area.
Yeah, but you got mail delivery, that, I'm in Sheridan, my whole trailer's 23310.
And that's true, that's why I'm saying, Eastville down, you're in Eastville down.
Yeah.
Isn't that what that 2,000 is?
Yeah, I don't know how they, they.
You said they listed it as.
I don't know how they came up with this figure, this is the Eastern Shore Public Library, we are not able to pull up the statistics, they had to get this for me, so I mean, I couldn't ask if.
That's what they can pull by zip code.
You know, if they can do it more in depth, but it took them a while to get this, so.
Probably missed the four people in Capeville.
Yeah, but the problem is Capeville still shows up as a Cape Charles mailing address. Everything down to the very stronghold here is delivered, how that isn't the more important number.
I mean, Eastville shows Cape Charles, some people.
Some people, if you get your mail delivered through Cape Charles.
I know that, I understand that.
That's what I'm saying.
That's why I'm saying, if you could get a zip code, get it by zip code, then you would get the Eastville, you would get Sheridan.
No, 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 you would still get 23310. Cape Charles is that post office.
It's your old delivery.
Yes.
None of you have a P.O. box.
The P.O. box is totally empty, they have delivery.
I know that was delivery, thank you.
But I'm just kidding, Cape Charles, I'm in Sheridan, my business gets delivered via that post office, so if I applied for it, use that P.O., I mean, that address, it would show up as Cape Charles.
Did you?
Yeah, shall we?
Yeah, if, one more, if you look at the circulation statistics, 50% of circulation's the Eastern Shore Public Library, then the other 50% is pretty much divided between Shinkit, Nassauautics, and Cape Charles, they are, you know.
Do we know, do we know how many people, do we know, do we have our circulation?
I don't have any other statistic in mind, if anything else you want to get, I'll drop that, but this is all that I have right now.
Well, if we want something more from you, maybe we'll talk offline about this, instead of trying to.
And thank you for what you did.
You're doing this here.
Very good.
Any other questions?
No. No, this is great, library's moving in, thank you. Police Department, Chief Crew.
I don't have anything, I think I put it in the report that we hired, Andrew Spencer.
Hmm?
Took across the bay yesterday, got their uniform for the police academy. So next week, I think I'll run to the academy, so either dorm key, they'll be staying over, and show them the area around where they're going to be for five months.
Okay.
Trying to get cameras installed, two cameras involved, so I've got them installed. Upcoming this week, we've had a car, it's had a Dodge dealership since October 25th, but, okay, everything's on the morning, picked, wanted to pick it up yesterday, walked around the car, and it's been beat, banged on, there, back front, dented, scratched, door's been it scratched, front bumper, dented, scratched, so they're going to fix it. So, we're behind a little bit, starting the cameras, because the car's still over there for however long, sure it's not.
Can I ask someone to be happy about price?
No, they, but annual dues, annual dues to the academy, at the dorm rooms are $810, $10 a day, cheaper than fuel and burst over there.
Maybe cheaper than living at home. Maybe cheaper than living at home.
Are you going to take one of your bad cars?
I'm going to give them the spare car, that's at my house, that's the other back and forth, and drive a week, and try to get them the blue prime bit, if you know how to drive a week goes, so I won't tear anything up that we need.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Public Utilities.
I don't have anything to add, anybody got a question?
Anything, of anyone? Great, thank you very much. Public Works, same thing, right? Questions on Public Works? Recreation. Very busy time of the year for you?
Yes, it's busy.
Things are going.
That's good.
Yeah, things seem to be going quite well, so, good.
And do you want to add, the Eastern Shore Out of Darkness also sent a certificate, not for two employees, and they were added, they acknowledged along with, and they were added to their file.
Thank you. Harbor Development Certificate.
Mr. Mayor and the Council, the Harbor Development Certificate comes for Lot 19, for the installation of decks and ramps, maybe accessible ramps in buildings, and the construction of a relocated previously approved fant house, this went to Harbor Review Board Tuesday, 29th of November. At that point, the Harbor Review Board recommended approval of the Harbor Development Certificate. The summary report as required by ordinance was delivered to the council at the December 1 work session. It recommends that the council accept the Harbor Review Board's recommendation to approve the Harbor Development Certificate.
May I have a motion to accept the Harbor Review Area Review Board's recommendation and approve Harbor Development Certificate for this location?
Someone.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Update Certificate.
The Comprehensive Plan has been through the required review and public hearing discussions. Public hearing, the Planning Commission was held on the 6th of December, immediately following, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution approving the amendments and certifying the plan, and sent the plan to Town Council with the recommendation that the plan be approved and adopted. The amendments include variants from what was advertised for the public hearing document, Section 4 implementation, Section 4.1 town priorities, which was struck from the previous draft, and the priorities were developed out of strategic planning session on December 10. That document's in front of me, that will be added to the draft document that was advertised for public hearings, the only section that's changed since public hearing.
I would like a motion to adopt a resolution approving the amendments and adopting the Comprehensive Plan document dated December 2015, as the comprehensive plan for the town of Cape Charles, with the amendments as noted. Some move. Is there any discussion on this? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Yay! I've been on board 348.
That was a yay, not a nay.
That was a yay.
Yay! Motion is approved. unanimous. Okay, thank you. And actually, I see I've not done this exactly right, there's an adoption of the Comprehensive Plan update. I'll read it. My apologies, people, you won't have to deal with me too much more. Where asked to go to Virginia Title 15.2, Chapter 22, Section 15.2-223, requires the town of Cape Charles to prepare and recommend a comprehensive plan update in physical development of its territory, and Section 15.2 mandates that at least once every five years, the Comprehensive Plan be reviewed by the local Planning Commission, and whereas the Cape Charles Planning Commission has reviewed the existing Comprehensive Plan, it concerns it to be advisable to update that plan, and whereas updates have been proposed for the incorporation of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, and whereas the Cape Charles Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of the 2016 updated Comprehensive Plan, and whereas a public hearing or the 2016 Cape Charles Conference, the plan was held on December 6, 2016, by the Town Council, now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of Cape Charles, Virginia adopts the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, land use map for the town of Cape Charles. And now I need to ask for a motion for a second.
Natali, yes.
Sullivan, yes.
Bannon, yes. Rattler, yes.
Bannon, yes.
Buckle chair.
Motion is carried, thank you all, thank you for your actions here.
How long was the preparation, two years?
More than that.
Three years.
Almost, almost as long as I, when I first came along.
Time to start again?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Guys, we're about to set a record on getting out of here on time.
Five minutes.
Next order of business is municipal building internet connectivity.
Because I'll take this one, Mr. Mayor, because I think you heard Debbie's report, we had some issues with, with Chief Crew at my head, that was what we reported last week, and trying to find a resolution to this, so we contracted Chesapeake Bay Communications, and they said that five hours across the street, across Mason Avenue, and they've given us a cost estimate of $10,000 to make that connection. We discussed this before the council's December 1 work session, and through tonight, staff recommends council to really. council board to reallocate the ten thousand dollars from the general fund contingency to connect the municipal building to Chesapeake Bay Communications fiber optic line.
May I have a motion to reallocate the ten thousand dollars from the general fund contingency to connect the municipal building to Chesapeake Bay Communications fiber optic line? So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Town Council Representative to the Town Harbor Focus.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Charles' absence, I will take this as well. We've discussed it in previous meetings, and they've started to think this is a thing that will scope this more of an ad hoc, like, arrangement to try to provide feedback about the harbor master, as well as the Town Council, establishing a committee, they've selected an annual seasonal slip holder, Tom Bonadeta, Commissioner Walker, and we represented the OPANIC, and we requested that the Town Council, one of the representatives, serve on said
All right.
Yeah, Theodore.
Yeah, who has nominations?
Nominated Theodore.
Nominated Theodore, standing.
Thank you, thank you.
I agree.
Ms. Dar Sol has been nominated for the Town Council Representative. Theodore, I beg your pardon, is Theodore. Nominated in second, all in favor?
Aye.
You got it.
I want it. Good, good, I want it.
Fix it. Why isn't it fixed? Next order of business, public hearing date, set public candidate for conditional use permit application, three, six, three.
We've done an application for conditional use for a residential unit on second floor of the Kellogg Building, ground floor is the commercial, as is required by its zoning district, zone commercial two. The application is attached, staff finds the application complete to the extent that it's ready to go to public hearing. Planning Commission received this application at their meeting Thursday, and set the public hearing date for the Planning Commission as Tuesday, third of January, twenty seventeen, that's our next scheduled regular meeting. Public hearing in front of Town Council is also required before there can be any legislative action on the conditional use permit for the residential unit, of the commercial, and the public. Staff recommends that the council meet fifteen, Tuesday, the third of January, twenty seventeen, as the date for a joint public hearing, and the commission on this application.
Before I call for a motion, the second is, I want to be sure there's no problem with All right, I may have a motion to set January third, two thousand seventeen, as the date for a public hearing on this conditional use permit. So I'll move. So second. Any further discussion?
The chart shows the second floor currently as the offices.
Correct.
And is this chart going to be updated?
Would they look the new app, look the app, look at his actual floor plan for the residential unit? It's a floor plan, what's currently there?
I understand. So when asking, oh, they said they're going to be residential, but the plan shows that there's offices, how's that going to work? So I just wanted to make sure. So at the hearing, whatever, let's be happy.
Yeah. And that's normally has its own independent entrance.
That's what I was, that's what I was going to ask. External egress. I know there's two internals, but no, no secondary or boot external. It's my question.
Thank you.
Anything else? Where is that external? It's not there. Where are they proposing it to be? Front, side, back?
Well, it's going to be one of those doors in front by the, by what's currently the building bay where they got the boat.
So the stairway will come down into the building, but exit that door. Hey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We zip through things very quickly, didn't we? Next item of business is Mayor and Council Comments. Ever, ever since you got along, Dar, we have a faster and better appreciation.
I had, I had a question. That last, this past November council meeting, there was a citizen who talked about the sign that was offensive in front of Watsons, and the request that that kind was made to see whether or not the town could take an opportunity to establish relationship with VDOC, that maybe we could be doing something like that in the future. Have we done anything with that so far?
Not to that border, no.
Have we planned to do something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Started that a little. So what I suggest here, what I, what I'd like to do here is to put that up and follow up by the next meeting.
Let's just set a deadline, I need a deadline. I said I need a follow-up. Last month you gave your.
Oh, that's right, it was.
So it'll be.
So it'll be when?
February?
Okay, citizens complaining about an offensive sign, come under something like the Akamak school thing, you know, rushing to act, is it private property, public property? I don't know.
Doesn't matter, it's the First Amendment.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. It's First Amendment. You take control of the sign.
I know.
The only thing you do is patrol where the sign is.
And what is?
And it was stated that it was VDOC.
Correct.
That's all we can control, if we work with VDOC.
Right, what we, what was asked is, what's the possibility of having some cooperative arrangement with VDOC that, once we understand what that would look like, then we can discuss it as a council and decide whether to adopt that or not to adopt it.
I don't even know if you need to adopt it, if VDOC agrees that.
George, I mean, we've had, I mean, we've had this conversation for years with VDOC, and they've said, if it's in the right way, take it down. And that's?
That would be.
We just have to, we have to get it in writing.
I want to get it in writing.
If we do that, that works. We can take it down, it's no issue.
You can't control the content.
No, you have to. She's worried about because of content.
Right, but I think, I think the message that Andy is going to is, regardless of what the sign says.
It can be in his front window, we can't do anything about it.
Right, but regardless of what the sign says in VDOC, whether or not it needs to be taken down, and we cannot distinguish between, well, we don't like this one, but this one's okay.
And we talked about this.
Right.
And VDOC, if we get permission in writing from VDOC, and we can do that, anything in VDOC private way should be taken down. Everything that's in VDOC private way should be taken down. We're not making a distinction between what is being said.
Right, so I think that's what Andy is.
That's what I mean, that's.
So that's what I said. We're on the same page.
We'll log in for five minutes.
Not only did he, he was just fired, and it's, we'll take it from you.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so Mayor and Council Comments. Joan? That's yours?
Well, aside from wishing Mr. Bannon a happy eightieth birthday, and wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, I was hoping we'd be able to tell our employees that they didn't have to come to our council meetings anymore.
I'll talk, we'll talk about that one.
Hopefully that'll be their Christmas by now.
Wow, look at all the smiles. Except the trailer.
Now, I'll talk to Brent about this. We'll have some discussion about this at the next work session, and I'm going to implement a policy like that at the first meeting in January.
Merry Christmas.
So, so, you know, I mean, I don't know what Brett might have in mind for when people need to come and when they don't, but whatever it is, we'll talk about it at the first work session in January, and then thereafter, I would think staff would come on an exceptional basis.
Well, I would, I'm cool. Yeah, I'm cool. I mean, we talked about this last work session, so it's like, all right, we have another work session, why don't we just say?
Did we talk about this at a work session?
We did. That's it. Why don't we just say, say it like it is, and we can leave it in a rental tenant?
And that was all departments too. Brent? All right, go on.
Thank you. I know I can be a little dangerous.
We also, my five minutes, we also said in that meeting on Saturday that we would remove the, how do we put that? No, the department reports would be in the council packet, never mind. I gave up.
And we had a question before the meeting.
Before the meeting, and should be answered? Yes, in a timely fashion.
Exactly, Matt.
Correct.
Okay.
It is smart.
Are you done?
I am.
Okay, Chris?
The twenty-fifth annual Tiffany Party will be January fourteenth at the Firehouse, thank you Jeff for clearing the Firehouse. This year's recipients will be the youth garden, New Roots Youth Garden, and we split between that and the music department at the high school, who are sending the kids to New York for competition.
And I put there, I understand.
Comments, spend your money. Get at least ten thousand dollars this year.
Right. Mr. Bannon. Nothing. You can't apologize to anybody.
No, I'm here, Merry Christmas to everybody.
I'm good. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Okay, if anybody would like to be a sponsor, like a hundred dollars, or two hundred dollars, or three hundred dollars, or if you're a rich minister, five hundred dollars, so that would really be appreciated, okay?
Was that party, your birthday party?
My birthday party. Free drinks.
It's the company party.
So, I really, I have no knowledge, I want to add my, my support to what Chris has said about this kid from high school. Nancy and I, my wife and I went to the concert last night at the high school, they were superb. They, they did a number, band did a number called Into the Arctic, I think is what it was, very difficult music, and very well performed. He has a trombone choir that does a song called Ding Ding, and it's just great, so any support you can give to them to get them to New York City would be appreciated.
Able to action. Able to action.
Yes, I do have, I do have one thing. Actually, my, so, other than being a Town Council, I'm a small business owner, I actually donated, what do I have, two, about two hundred and fifty, sixty, seventy shirts that I actually printed out and gave to them as fundraisers, so if you'd be able to buy one. Because all the OCS go to that, period.
Good.
One hundred percent of it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have nothing clever, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, a safe holiday.
At least, yeah.
After we can hear each other, we'll sing together. That's it. And I need a motion for your turn, I'll move. Second. All in favor? Any opposed?